I think we have nearly everyone back. So with that, we will call to order the February 11th, 2021, meeting of the Abington Township Board of Commissioners Committee of the Hull. Our first item of business this evening is a motion to approve the minutes from the Board of Commissioners Committee of the Hull meeting of January 14, 2021. And I say move.
Okay.
Thank you. Do we have any comments or corrections to the minutes from members of the board? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you. We'll move on now. This evening, we do have one presentation. We're going to be receiving an update about the township's comprehensive plan from Mike Narcoich. And when Mr. Narcoich is finished, I'm going to turn it to Commissioner Thompson to make a few comments before opening it up to questions or comments from other members of the board. So thank you, Mr. Narcoich.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Hacker. And let me see here, would it be best? I think they're going to display my PowerPoint, but.
I'm pulling it up as we speak.
Thanks, Ashley. So yes, I am Mike Narcoich from Montgomery County Planning Commission and the Assistant Section Chief for Community Planning. And tonight, I'll be giving you a quick update on the comp plan, which we're calling Vision 2035. And you can go on to the next slide. And this is the logo that the comp plan development team and I came up with for the comp plan. We'll be using this with branding, with promotional material, advertising for public outreach and using it throughout the plan and subsequent follow-on steps. Next. And tonight, there's really two components. I'll move fairly quickly through the first part, which is the summary of public outreach in the first round that we conducted. That was, that was done a little over a year ago. And then the second one is the timeline and next steps. And I'll focus more on that. Next. Next. Okay, so for the public outreach, one of the reasons, one of the reasons I'm going to skim through this is because this is going to be posted, this same presentation is going to be posted tomorrow morning on the township's comp plan website. And I'll be giving you the URL for that at the end of this presentation. Just really quickly, the comp plan development team has been working on the comp plan for a little over a year now. And that's been chaired by Commissioner Thompson. And we've got a great group that has really provided a lot of good insight and advice, and has done a lot of critical thinking with me. And they represent a range of interests and backgrounds and knowledge from environmental management to economic development, planning and historic preservation, education, engineering, housing and transportation. So the four workshops we held in the first round of outreach were to help develop the goals and vision and start the process. And we wanted to reach as many people as we could. So we had four workshops in essentially the four corners of the township. Edgehill, Crestmont, McKinley, Riddle. And you see the dates, we had those, those public workshops. Next. And we asked people, this is not everyone, but we asked people to encourage them to place a dot on the map based on where they live to give us a sense how well we did reaching people from across the township. And they're color-coded, so the red ones were the first workshop in Edgehill. You can see they're kind of clustered down there. Got a lot from that, that neighborhood. Blue represents those who attended the Crestmont Public Workshop in the upper left, but there's also some from scattered places. And then yellow was for the third workshop at McKinley. And that also drew a bunch of people from throughout the 611 corridor. And then green was for the Riddle East Workshop. Next. And here's just a few photos of the Crestmont Clubhouse in the lower left, Edgehill Firehouse and above. And then we also went to both McKinley and Riddle East Elementary Schools. Next. And we used instant polling and apps that could allow us to ask questions of the audience. And we asked them to answer questions on their phones so that we knew instantly, or fairly instantly, what the results were. And we could present them on screen so that not only us, but members of the audience participating could see what the most popular answers were. So that, that was very useful and also helped, helped us develop follow-up questions to get at some of the larger concerns. Next. And I'm not going to go into detail again, because you'll have an opportunity to look at this closely if, if you'd like on your own. But we asked what the public wants to preserve. And some of the top answers were community services, parks and open space, and the community's character. And we asked what the public wants to enhance about the township. And transportation led the way. And that was especially so with enhancing safety in residential neighborhoods and on 611 and 232, also making it easier and safer to bike or walk. Next. And next. And I'm going to skip ahead and next. Okay, and we asked the public what they want to transform. And transportation was also the top answer here. And again, it was especially walkability. So that definitely gave us something to think about. And I'll be talking a little bit more about transportation soon. So next. We asked residents what three adjectives they would use to describe their ideal version of Abington in 2035 to help us to develop a vision statement. And they were the types of adjectives that you'd use to describe a pleasant, attractive residential community. And so safe led the way by far, great schools and diverse followed, and green, clean, great parks, and inclusive were also in there. So it's interesting that diverse and inclusive were both ranked fairly highly. Okay, and this was just the word cloud we used to project that, those answers. We asked, which chapter would the public suggest we emphasize? And the answer was economic development and revitalization. Next. And we asked, if you could add a chapter, what would it be? And it was sustainability. And we got two different types of answers for sustainability. We had holistic, which is economic, social, environmental. And then we also got environmental sustainability. And after discussing with the comp plan development team, we decided the best option would be to incorporate it into the environmental management and resilience chapter as a special component. And diversity, equity and inclusion, like I mentioned before, came up numerous times. So that's something that we're keeping an eye on. And although we're not dedicating a chapter to it, it's something that we're going to interweave throughout the chapters of the plan and will, will use to inform our recommendations throughout. So now I'm going to go on to timeline and next steps. Next. And here you have a list of the chapters. And we have drafted nine of the 14 chapters, which you see in the black font. And in the gray font, we have the chapters that are upcoming. Those chapters include some of the weightier chapters, the more significant ones, including transportation and future land use. So that, and those will entail additional rounds of public outreach. Next. And just so far, noted a couple of observations. I've noted that the comp plan development team has given special attention due to their own interests or due to the fact that there's been quite a lot of work done in these areas. Put a lot of attention to environmental management and resilience and to history, township's history and historic preservation. Next. So this is the timeline going forward. And we're in February. And currently, we're doing an internal review at the County Planning Commission. And I'm having my colleagues provide their expertise with their specific planning backgrounds to review and comment on the drafts to this point, which is the first drafts, which have been reviewed and edited by the camp plan development team after I wrote them. And then going forward, I will work on transportation beginning next month. And that will carry forward a few months because I would like to do some public outreach, internet-based for that, using a web app, web map app, so that the public can go in and make comments on a map about areas where they'd like to see transportation improvements or make suggestions or point out issues. And then following transportation, economic development comes in June. And then future land use begins in July and extends through September. And then that would be an ideal spot to do more public outreach because future land use is such a core component of the comprehensive plan. And so for that, I'd like to do a Zoom webinar. And there's different formats you can use. So there's an opportunity with smaller numbers to do breakout rooms and have small group discussion led by facilitator in each virtual room. And then there's other ways you can handle it too. So just by having the virtual polling and then following up with questions and, and answers, whether that be done by text or, or not. So that could be similar to what we did in the first round, but, but using Zoom. After that, after future land use, then we would have parks and open space in October, and that would be sort of a mini-chapter, anticipating the full comprehensive recreation park and open space plan, which would be incorporated in the comp plan by reference. And then the implementation chapter in November, which prioritizes the recommendations. And then we would have final formatting and review begin in December. And this is just a way of illustrating how the public feedback is incorporated into the plan with the remaining components. And essentially, there's three remaining components. Drafting of the final chapters, the finalization of the plan, and the adoption process. And with the drafting of the five final chapters, we have the opportunity to incorporate feedback from public outreach, like the types I talked about. And then when we finalize the plan, it'll undergo more formal vetting by the township and its, not only its staff, but its, you know, it's EAC and Shape Tree Commission and specialists and engineers and so forth and solicitor. And we'll get that review. And, and in addition to that of the borough, excuse me, the Township Planning Commission and the Board of Commissioners. And then on the right, you see the municipality's planning code requires, as part of their adoption process, that we ask for comment from the school districts and contiguous municipalities. And so that's the opportunity to obtain, obtain that then and perhaps make minor modifications at that time. Next. So, and this is just illustrates a few of the, the public outreach opportunities. So this just shows you some online mapping and how you, the public can annotate that. Next. And then online surveys, typically we use Survey Monkey or Survey 123. Next. And, and then of course, there's the Zoom webinar. Next. So like I said, the plan adoption is dictated by the municipality's planning code, the adoption process, and that's per section 302. And after it goes through informally, the different township groups and, and staff, it will go to the Township Planning Commission. And then the Township Planning Commission would forward it to the Board of Commissioners. And then you can solicit comment from neighboring municipalities and school districts and undergo public advertisement, hold a public hearing. And then after that, if there's no major changes, it can be adopted. Next. And then the follow-up to it, just very quickly, a couple important points. There would be incorporation by reference of the Stormwater Management Plan, essentially making it a chapter in the comp plan. And that's ongoing. Next. And there'd be incorporation as well of the comprehensive recreation parks and open space plan, which would essentially become a chapter in the plan as well. And then we have the website where you will find the PowerPoint presentation. I think that's going up on the website tomorrow morning. But this is the comp plan page, which is going to be one of the primary ways we're going to advertise future public events for the comp plan. And I'd be happy to take any questions.
Thank you very much, Mr. Narcoich. Before we open it up for questions from the board, I'm going to turn first to Commissioner Thompson.
Thank you, Vice President Hacker. I just wanted to give a shout out to, to Mr. Narcoich, as well as all the members of the Comprehensive Plan Development Team that have taken a part in the process to get through the chapters that we have drafted so far. Despite the challenges that the last year has presented us, I think they've done a pretty heroic job in really trying to maintain that sense of organization and keep the process moving forward and getting us back on track. So a big thank you to all of them for everything that they've done so far. And I look forward to continue to working with, with all of you as we move through the next five chapters. On the next five chapters, I think one of the big regrets that we have so far as a comp plan team is that we haven't really been able to engage in public engagement the way that we were able to very early on in the process. Again, mostly because of the pandemic. But we are looking for ways to change that. As you heard from Mr. Narcoich tonight, and we will be engaging in some of those very, very shortly. So I would, I would encourage everybody out there that's listening tonight to make sure that you take part in the public engagement process that Mr. Narcoich and the team is putting forward, whether that be an online survey or whatever other mode we kind of come up with in the next few months here. Your input is extremely important. This plan isn't for the Comprehensive Plan Development Team. It's not for the Board of Commissioners per se. It is for the community of Abington Township. And it is written for you. And in theory, it's written by you. So please make sure that you take part in the public engagement sessions that we have over the next few months and make your voice heard. And that's all I have. Thank you, Vice President Hacker.
Thank you, Commissioner Thompson. I'll now open it up to comments or questions from my colleagues. I'd ask you to use the raise hand function so I don't miss you. Commissioner Bowles.
I just wanted to thank Commissioner Thompson for his work on this and Mr. Mark Narcoich for his leadership here. It's really tremendous. And being sort of a relatively new commissioner representing part of Glenside, I am really keen to see how we can get this going. Because the, I think what, I'm, I'm very excited by some of the values that were expressed early on from public comment, particularly around sustainability and DEI and how we incorporate those into the future of the township. I think we have a real opportunity to make those a little more front and center than they are in our everyday work. And I'm really excited to see them early on in the plan. I guess my, my hardball question is, Mr. Narcoich, that I saw a word pretty large in the word cloud that I didn't see as a chapter. And I was wondering why there's not a chapter on yogurt? I don't know. Why was the word yogurt in the, in the, in the word cloud? Do we do any idea there? Oh, you're muted, Mr. Narcoich.
Sorry, thank you. I don't know, but clearly it's very important to one of the communities.
It's very, it's very important. In all seriousness, no, thank, thank you for your, your good work on this. I'm looking forward to the next step.
Thank you, Commissioner Bowles. President Spiegelman.
Thank you. Thank you, Vice President Hacker. I just want to, I just want to say, I was actually at the, the meeting. I think it was the Riddle East meeting where yogurt just ended up when we, when we were doing the, the, the exercises that ultimately became the, the word cloud of the night. That's where, that's where yogurt came up. And it, it was completely, it was completely random. But I just, very, very briefly, just want to also thank Commissioner Thompson, the entire team and, and Mr. Narcoich for, for all of your work on this. It's really, it's really exciting to, to see where this is going. So thank you very much. Yogurt.
Thank you, President Spiegelman.
Thank you.
Any further comments or questions for members of the board? Okay. Yeah, thank you, Commissioner Thompson and Mr. Narcoich. And we look forward to hearing more from you as these next steps get underway. So now we will move on. Our next item is to entertain public comments on agenda items this evening. And so I will ask Ashley, we have one attendee hand raised. If you could bring that individual in, thank you.
Ms. Lehman, your microphone has been unmuted.
Okay, so.
You're gonna.
I got the double, the double again. Yeah, I know, I have to turn one off.
Ms. Lehman, I hear you now? Yes.
Can you hear? Okay. I don't know why the other one doesn't work. So, okay. And, and again, you had a big, long time there and a big, long break. And troubleshooting could have happened. And also, a chat room could have been put in and wasn't. Absolutely, you know, you all should be ashamed. Absolutely no accommodation for the problems that citizens have. And, and I have to, I have to laugh. We just had the presentation. So first of all, the Committee of the Hull should not be a place for presentations. This meeting is already too long. You have two months jammed into one. And so there shouldn't be a place for a presentation. But don't you think it's funny that it's supposedly for us and by us, but we're not allowed to comment on it? It's only commissioners that are allowed.
You can comment on it now, Ms. Lehman. And I would urge you to focus your comments on what is on this evening's agenda.
Well, that's it. I mean, I consider that to be on the agenda. But you went through that and then went down to agenda items.
No, actually, I stopped before agenda items and opened it up for public comments. So if you have a comment on the Comprehensive Plan presentation, this would be your opportunity to make it.
Okay, is this, this is then not the open comments for the Committee of the Hull? This is comments for the, for the Comprehensive Plan? Yes or no?
Ms. Lehman, this is a comment period on agenda items. One of the agenda items this evening was a presentation on the Comprehensive Plan. If you would like to focus your time on that, you may do so.
So you do realize that we are not ever allowed to comment on presentations? Okay? And so for you to change those rules right now and expect that I somehow intuitively knew you were going to do that is a little unusual. So let me start, okay? I'm setting my timer right now. I'm going to start my comments now that I know what section we're in.
Well, you're, you have three minutes remaining of your five minutes.
Oh, my God. I mean, what are you afraid I'm going to say something that, that somebody will hear?
No, Ms. Lehman, I have no fear.
This is ridiculous.
So I would urge you to get to your comments.
Yeah, I would urge you to do a few things too. So what, what we need to do.
One more comment like that and your microphone will be shut off.
I understand totally. You're completely in control. I understand that. Okay? The, the community, the Committee of the Hull is not healthy. You are jamming two months into one. It is not healthy for senior citizens or anybody to be on the computer this late at night with devices in their eyes. Ask your doctor, please. And you are in charge of our health and welfare. So please get back to putting presentations and everything in the committee meetings where they belong with proper speaking rights. Thank you. Okay? And then Briar Bush, the, the, you know, how wonderful. You got a grant and you can do more. I will tell you, years, years and years and years ago, and I've been here for over 40 years, okay? My children are closing in on their 40s now. And they went to Briar Bush when it didn't have every single inch of grant project with the trees cut down and something built. It was a beautiful, natural place with a pond that didn't have a chain link fence around it. It was just gorgeous. Okay? And over the years, the grant projects have turned it into a grant project bonanza. And we need to think about that. We have very little green space left. And you're trying to build on every inch of it. Okay? So same thing with Crestmont Park. And if you look at the, that side of the township, they need every inch of green space to be preserved. And budget-wise, when you look at what you're doing with Briar Bush and, and try and think how terribly important it is to do that with Briar Bush, because we lost $5 million in revenue this year because of COVID. But we took $5 million out of the fund balance. So really, we didn't cut anything. In a, in a COVID year where people are hurting, we didn't cut anything. And we're still doing projects like this that are not important. Okay? I also just wanted to say, since I was cut off before and constantly have to spend my time talking about the process to actually make the computers work for the residents, I want to say Hunter Socker was supposed to have put funds aside to return the field to natural. I hope that's what the escrow is. I hope somebody could answer me and tell me that's what that was for.
20 seconds, Ms. Lehman.
Yes, okay. I'm going to give you my 20 seconds, okay? But I am going to tell you, you all should be ashamed for not putting in the processes that I'm telling you about and for allowing Mr. Manfredi to continue to confuse things by making them just, I mean, a consent agenda is nothing but Mr. Manfredi.
So we're not, we've now drifted. We've now drifted. Thank you for your comments. If we could let in Kathy Gauthier.
Good evening, can you hear me?
Yes, we can, thank you.
Okay. I was very happy to see the presentation on the Comprehensive Plan update. I did have a question on the drafts that have been completed. Or I know they're only in draft form, but are they available for the public to see yet or not?
I would ask either Mr. Narcoich or Commissioner Thompson.
Not yet.
No.
So, so all the documents that are available, Commissioner, I'll answer. We did create a website. And all the documents that have been created and any chapters and any work that has been created will be on the website. So if you go, and that's the link that Mr. Narcoich was referring to. We do have a page for the comp plan. When they are in draft form and completed, they will be there.
But at this point, they are not linked? Is that?
I do not believe they are finished, therefore linked.
Okay, okay. And the only other question I had regarding that was for housing. I'm assuming it might have to be revised again based on the 2020 census. But I'd be interested in definitely reading the drafts of those portions of the comp plan as they become available. So thank you. That's it.
Thank you. I was talking to myself on mute a year into this thing, and I still forget sometimes to unmute myself. Thank you for your comments. And seeing that we have no other, we'll move to the agenda. We have no unfinished business this evening, so we will move right into new business. Item A is for us to consider and discuss accepting Renew Design Group Incorporated Professional Service Proposal for the Briar Bush Master Site Plan Implementation Grant, design and engineering in the amount of $29,800 and authorize the township manager to execute. And I'm going to turn this over to Manager Manfredi.
Thank you, Commissioner Hacker and members of the board. In a moment, I'm going to introduce to you Mark Fallon, who many of you may remember, Mark, for the many years that he has been the senior naturalist with Briar Bush. And he is now, as you know, in the, been elevated to and selected and proud of selecting him to be the director of Briar Bush. And this is a project that he has been working on for some time with many of the good people who work very hard and very diligently to not only keep Briar Bush green, but natural. And, and the friends of Briar Bush who have been doing a tremendous job in assisting and keeping costs down with, with fundraising events and other things. And I just think it's important to note that it is a true partnership. And we continue to build on that partnership. And Mark is going to be a critical piece of that future. So I just wanted to make sure that everyone understands the, the good work that they all do.
all the employees, as well as the friends. And with that, Mark, if you want to begin your presentation very briefly so that everyone understands what this project is and is not, and I will turn it over to you.
Thank you, Mr. Manfredi. So the project at Briar Bush began as a planning process that actually a couple of commissioners were part of, and then Commissioner Schreiber. So that was a planning process in some ways similar to the Comprehensive Plan on a much smaller scale, where we did a number of public workshops, public comment periods. It was a grant that allowed us to do that through DCNR to basically ask the community what they would like to see at Briar Bush Nature Center in the next, you know, 20 to 25 years. And the responses that we got were, you know, broad. But one of the most repetitive responses was that people wanted Briar Bush to stay natural, to feel like the woods. And so we are committed to that version of Briar Bush. And we will not be adding anything to the footprint of any buildings, adding anything to the footprint of our parking lot. And actually, conversely, we'll be creating with this project some new stormwater management facilities where there used to be parking areas. So this specifically refers to the design and engineering of this project. We now have an implementation grant, matching grant through DCNR, to go ahead and construct the four priority parts of the master site plan identified by the public. And this, again, is a bid for that engineering and design portion. This was one of seven bids. It was the second lowest bid that we got. And it was $325 more than the lowest bid. The reason that we didn't, we are not recommending the lowest bid is that this designer, Renew Design, has a much higher experience in landscape architecture versus civil engineering. And that is really, you know, what we are looking for in designing a park development.
Thank you, Mr. Fallon. Manager Manfredi, is there anything else you want to say before I open it up for questions?
No, sir. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any comments or questions from my colleagues? Commissioner Behe.
I just, I would say this seems like a very good proposal. And I think we can recommend advancing it to the full board next month without further committee process.
Thank you, Commissioner Behe. Commissioner Schreiber.
It was on the original, I think it was 2018 when all of this started, if I remember the right year. And so to get to this point, we've already gone through quite a lot. And I did want to mention, because I don't think that Mark said this, the match that's needed for this is not going to cost the township anything. It's from Friends of Briar Bush and from volunteer hours. So there's not any... Am I right about that, Mark?
Well, there is a cash pledge from the Friends of Briar Bush of $30,000. There is quite a bit of volunteer time and labor in the budget. But there will be some in-house... The township will be fulfilling its portion of the match through in-house labor.
Thank you. So I would also recommend that this goes right to the full board.
Thank you, Commissioner Schreiber. Any other comments or questions? All right, well, seeing that there is enthusiasm, I would ask either Commissioner Behe or Commissioner Schreiber to make a motion to advance this forward to the March Board meeting.
I'll defer to the ward commissioner.
Thank you very much. I would like to make a motion that we pass this on to the full board.
Do you care to second? Okay.
Second.
My bad.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Hi.
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 Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion will move forward for the March Board meeting. Next up is Item B. And prior to this evening's meeting, I've been advised by Manager Manfredi that this agenda item, in terms of discussion of the Winter Traffic Services Agreement with PennDOT, was actually approved in October. There was some concern about PennDOT processing, but that's been resolved. And so we need not take any action on Item B this evening. And we're going to move forward to Item C. And Item C, I hope I can read this. Okay, so here, we're going to be considering a motion to approve advertisement of an ordinance amending Chapter 156 Vehicles and Traffic, Article 2 Traffic Regulations, Section 11 Turns at Intersections, Section 14 Stop Intersections, and Article 3 Parking Regulations, Section 28 Special Purpose Parking Zones, to add a new section, 156-11.5 Turning Traffic Must Yield to Pedestrians Left, to add a Turning Traffic Must Yield to Pedestrians Left sign on Hamilton Avenue at Easton Road, a stop sign on Gregory Road northbound at Pepper Road, and to remove a handicap parking sign in front of 2552 Brookdale Avenue. Are there comments or questions from my colleagues? Commissioner Schreiber is Chair of the Public Safety Committee. Do you wish to weigh in?
No, I think that's, everything is fine.
Okay.
No comment.
Thank you. All right. Being that there are no comments, I will make a motion that we move this forward for consideration at the March Board of Commissioners meeting. Can I get a second?
And I'll second that.
Thank you. The motion has been moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Hearing none, then this will move forward to the March Board of Commissioners meeting. And our final item of business this evening is Item D. And this is for us to consider a motion to appoint candidate Timothy Seidel from the Civil Service Eligibility List to the position of probationary police officer, provided he successfully completes the background, physical and psychological tests and all entry requirements of the Municipal Police Officers Education and Training Commission for Act 122 Training effective March 8, 2021. And I understand from Manager Manfredi that Deputy Chief Kelly Warner is here with us tonight to speak to this item.
Good evening, everyone. Tim Seidel is currently employed with us right now as a part-time dispatcher. He's a fine candidate, as Lieutenant Porter is also with us tonight. He's welcome to jump in, too. He is not one of the hires that we are postponing. The three hires that we're postponing, he's actually replacing an individual who has left, who retired last year some time ago. So he's not one of the three that we are postponing for financial reasons, as we are holding back, as we are doing, so that we can save the budget moving forward. Tim Seidel, I think you'll be pleased with him as much as we are for the township. He's a good kid. We actually stole him from another agency before he signed on, was waiting to work here in Abington.
That's excellent. Do we have any comments or questions for Deputy Chief Warner? Commissioner Behe.
This is not really directed to Deputy Chief Warner. Just want to respond to a comment earlier about how this township didn't have any sacrifices or cuts as a result of the financial crisis we're all experiencing. That was not true. In fact, one of the greatest sacrifices was our personnel. The police department graciously found a way to make do with three less police officers. This is not one of those decisions. So to dispel any confusion, we did sacrifice substantially. And we continue to sacrifice. And this is not one of those positions that we have tried to defer. So I fully support this.
Thank you, Commissioner Behe. Other comments or questions from my colleagues? Okay, hearing none, I'm going to make a motion that we move this matter forward for approval at the March Board of Commissioners meeting.
I second that.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the matter will move forward to the March Board of Commissioners meeting. And that actually concludes our agenda for this evening. And so we will adjourn this evening's Committee of the Hall meeting, and we will retire to executive session momentarily. Thank you all, and good evening.
Thank you. Good night.
Good night.
Good night.
Hi, Liz.
Good night.